I call the meeting. Hello, hello. I call the meeting to order for the October 10th closed session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill has an excused absence.
Now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. You were quick today, Jim. You were quick.
Mayor Plow, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I notice on the closed session agenda, one of the items you're going to be considering is, it says, the price and terms of payment for a piece of city-owned land in West Newport on which a portion of Pacifica Christian High School sits. It's impossible for the public to tell from that whether you're considering extending the current lease the high school has or selling the property to them. I hope you're not considering a sale or extending the lease at a below-market rate, but I can't be sure of that. And the reason I can't be sure is the other part of the high school campus sits on a valuable piece of Banning Ranch adjacent land that the city at one time owned. And actually, it was zoned for housing, which we're short on in the moment. But that was sold by the city in 2014. And not only was that valuable property sold, but the part that was not sold, the transferee was given rent-free use of that. And last year, that rent-free use of the unsold part of that other parcel was extended to the high school. And then on the agenda tonight, one of the items is a rent-free lease of North Star Beach to the Aquatic Center. So there seems to be a tendency to go in that direction. I would just like to remind you that property in Newport Beach is very valuable. It appreciates with time. It's a good thing for the city to hold on to that. So I hope you're not considering either selling this piece of property that we currently own or asking for less than the fair market rate for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on agenda and non-agenda items?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak to you. It's off agenda. My name is Debbie McGuire. I'm the executive director with the Wetlands and Wildlife Care Center in Huntington Beach. And we take all the wildlife and rehabilitate them from the city of Newport Beach, in fact, from the entire county. And I think I emailed all of you. Hopefully, you got a copy of it. It was later this after, earlier this afternoon. But what we're proposing is to up the service agreement, the professional service agreement that the city of Newport Beach has with us. Currently, you give us $10 per animal that's brought in, and the actual cost is $125 per animal. Cities like Costa Mesa and Irvine and Long Beach and a few others have agreed now to up it, and they're going to match that. So in 2022, it was 321 wildlife that was brought in to the Wetlands and Wildlife Care Center from Newport Beach. So we received $960 from you that year, and the actual cost was about $40,000. So I'd like you to take the time, read over what I sent you, contact me if you have any questions, and let's see if we can get something better so that we could keep our doors open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers on agenda and non-agenda items? Anyone at all? Feel free to come up.
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Devine. I'm here to talk about recovery homes in my neighborhood. I live in the Pegasus Track in San Ana Heights. As you probably know, we have a proliferation of recovery homes in our neighborhood. And I now understand that there is another one up for application on Indus, on Indus Street. As you know, probably aware, that we had a company that was running, is still running a home on Redlands Street in that track. They had a client escape from the facility and caused a tragedy in our neighborhood. I don't want to see that happen again. There's another recovery home that just opened up recently on Orchard Street. Unfortunately, they are adjacent to my property, right behind my house. It's the same company that's applying for a new permit to run one on Indus. And I can tell you, they are not good neighbors. We have cigarette smoke blowing over our fence all day long. They have conversations with loud voices, loud laughter, sometimes yelling in the backyard at 2:00 in the morning. When we have asked them to please be quiet, we are meted with a bunch of four-letter words. They're not good neighbors. I'd hate to see another one come into our neighborhood. And I hope we can get some help on this. I know Costa Mesa has been very successful regulating these homes in Costa Mesa. I don't understand why Newport Beach cannot be the same. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker. Anybody speaking on agenda or non-agenda items at this time? If we are going to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, as some of you have just arrived, please head up, make a little line, and we'd be happy to hear you.
Hi, council members. I'm Michelle Wilkins, and I live on Orchard Drive. And first of all, we live several houses down from the new facility. And two nights ago, my husband and I were out walking our dogs, and they had one of their windows open, and we could see the security cameras monitoring the house. It's very scary for us to live in a neighborhood like that. The home looked like a prison, just the cameras and whatnot. We also have a park, a little pocket park at the bottom of our street, that the kids can't use during the day anymore because the groups from the numerous homes are walking down there and sitting. I know it's a public park, and I know these people are on their own journey, but it's very unfortunate that the kids in our neighborhood can't use the park during the day. We also, I'm trying to go through, I was unprepared to speak. I can't walk past certain houses at night. I have two big dogs. I make sure my husband or one of my kids go out with me. There's a couple of them that are very loud, and it's very unnerving to be in our neighborhood. And I feel like these houses are really monetizing a neighborhood, a community, and the people that live there are kind of just, they come and they go, and it's really, our neighborhood is deteriorating. We have, we've lived there for 10 years. As these houses move in, it's October, we will have no kids trick-or-treating in our house because no one knows what is a safe house and who is a halfway house. So I would appreciate it if you could help us take back our area. Our little pocket area is a cul-de-sac. We have parking issues with all these houses. I mean, six adults, six cars, vehicles, there's nowhere for us as residents to park when they're all there. So you should drive by during the day and spend a day in our community and see what it's like, just the foot traffic, the cigarette smoke, your parkway being trampled on. It's, it's not what it used to be. It's very unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Jennifer Haning, and I live at 1572 Indus Street. That is the house that was broken into by the psychotic patient that left the facility at Gratitude Lodge on Redlands. Sorry to be woken up at 4:20 in the morning, someone banging on my door, and then boom, they're in my house. My husband and I were in bed. I alerted him because I heard him at the side of our house. He got up. He got his gun. He went to the top of the stairs. This individual ran around the bottom floor of our house, and this all happened in 20 seconds, from the time he broke in to the time he was shot. My husband was screaming at him, "Who's there? Who's there?" And the next thing you know, he's coming up the stairs. My husband is screaming at him, pointing a gun at him, telling him to stop. And he kept coming. He got up eight stairs out of 13 before my husband pulled the trigger. And he fell down our stairs. And I heard him moaning, taking his last breath. And then he died right in my doorway. The doorway I walk over every day. I have to come down those stairs every day. And the only reason we are still in that neighborhood is because of the people in that neighborhood. We are so blessed by all of the people that supported us and the friendships we've made, and we don't want to lose that. I know that you guys are limited as to what you can do, but all I ask is for you to do the maximum of what you can do. I beg you. I am begging you. This cannot happen again. We have so many children in our neighborhood, there's an increase in traffic, there's already parking issues from Gratitude Lodge right there, and now they're trying to put another facility, another company, literally 110 feet away. Where are they going to park? Are they going to park in our cul-de-sac where all the children are playing? And then we have to worry about the type of people in these facilities, which they have very little supervision and regulation to even keep them from harming other people. This can't be continuing. And so I beg you to please make every effort that you can to stop this. I know that Simone has sent a letter to DSS. Please, all of you, call DSS. Keep on them. We are doing our best to do that as well. We're trying to rally the neighborhood. And so, I'm sorry, I know that's all the time I have, but again, I beg you, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Chet Grosskreutz. I live at 1551 Pegasus Street in that neighborhood. I also have, had a rental around the corner at August Lane. I've been there for more than 40 years. I was the past president of the Sherwood Estates Home Association in the 1990s when we were involved with the airport issues. And I am here to just talk about a little bit of the history of this group of people in these, in this neighborhood. At that time, my four kids were little, and we had a difficult time putting together a program for some of the residents of our neighborhood who wanted to move and not face the airport noise and the extra traffic. And for those who wanted to stay, they wanted to have some protection against the increased flights and the noise that came from additional flights in the airport. And so, as a group, we bonded together, hired legal help. But more importantly, we were pleasantly amazed at the galvanization that we received from our community. And I am here to tell you that whatever you can do, we appreciate. But I think, and I know from experience, that this neighborhood and the people who live here are not going to sit down and lay down and let this happen again, what just was testified earlier. And I know that there's laws out there, and I know that the state of California has legalized many of the things that happen, and so you have somewhat of a challenge to address these issues. But I'm here to tell you, and this is a promise, that we will not stand for the violations that we see daily from these homes. And when we call and report them, nothing happens. I've physically myself been to these homes, made myself clandestine visitor and asked to enter, which is, by the way, anybody outside the homes, groups of these homes, they're not supposed to have any visitors, and they're not supposed to enter the homes, and yet they allowed me to come in and spend time with these people, not knowing who I was. And so I'm here to say that any claim that the owners of these facilities make about how they are so perfect in their violations, and any claims that are made by the state who is supposedly running these and supposed to keep these folks compliant with the regulations, it's not happening. I live there, and I see what goes on, and I'm here to testify, it's not happening. And we have all armed ourselves in the neighborhood. When I had my four kids, we didn't have to worry about that. Everybody went trick-or-treating. Our kids went to, were in the streets all the time, going to neighbors' houses. It was great. There was no danger or fear of any of the things like this happening. And that was before internet and all of that. So, you know, I think that the position of most of the legal minds that represent these homes are to take advantage of those who are going to roll over and not do anything. But again, I just want to emphasize, we will do all we can. And if that means going to these homes and picketing in front of them and riding around in our bicycles and having our kids do the same, we will continue to do that, and we will do that again.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jessica Arnold, and I am the neighbor to 1621 Indus, which is currently applying for a license to be a mental health facility. I have two children, five and seven. They were three and five at the time of the Gratitude Lodge incident at our dear friend's home, which has left a lot of scars and trauma on my family. The fact that there's a possibility of not just across the street, the Gratitude Lodge still operating, a new one on Orchard, another one on Klein, and these are all walking distance for my five-year-old, that's how close they are, plus a sober living, three of them in my line of sight. The house next door is now trying to become a mental health facility. You guys have to understand how very close all of these are. There is a health and safety code by the state of California, Health and Safety Code 1520.5. It is the policy of the state to prevent overconcentrations of residential care facilities that impair the integrity of residential neighborhoods. When we called DSS, they say, "It's up to your city to enforce." The door-to-door from Gratitude to this new facility, I went with a measuring tape with my mother and measured. It's less than 170 feet from door-to-door. My kids should not have to live in a mental health facility. We bought a home in Newport Beach as a young married couple, which is not an easy thing to do, by the way. You have to work very hard. Everybody here is working very hard to be here. And then only to be met with, "Now we live in a mental health facility." Would you want to buy my house? Would you want to live between those two? And three more? I really want you guys to think about what you can do here because this is extremely unfair, dangerous, there's a code. California is telling us it's up to you guys to enforce it. You guys are telling us it's up to them, not to give them a license. I want to know, who knows? Who's responsible for this? Because everyone's pointing fingers at each other. Do any of you know? You know? Who's responsible?
There's a lot to be...
We're not, I'll, I promise we'll address some of the things when you guys are done. But yes, we've spent countless hours, time and energy. We're all also residents here. We feel the same way. But you're right, there are some very difficult things, but I, this isn't question-and-answer time, so please finish, and we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is John Huang. I live on Pegasus Street in the same tract as our neighbors on Indus and Redlands and Orchard. So it's not a very large neighborhood, it's a small neighborhood. But we're looking at a half dozen of these residential facilities, commercial facilities who are renting out basically an Airbnb-type thing. And it should be residential. Enforce the law. That's all that we ask. Enforce the law to the maximum extent that is available. Make our residential neighborhood a residential neighborhood. That's all I want, so that my kids will be safe there, that I don't need a gun, that I don't need to repeat the situation that happened on Indus, I don't need to shoot one of these crazy psychotic people. Don't make me do that. But by God, I will if I have to, because my kids are more important than those psychotic felons. I want you to understand that.
Sir, we are understanding it. And let's, let's keep the temperament where we can. Thank you.
My name is Travis Haning. I'm at 1572 Indus. My wife spoke earlier. I thought she said it very well. There's not much that I feel like I can add. It's a dangerous situation. The police report says that this, the person who kicked open my door at 4:24 in the morning was looking for a knife so he could kill the demons that he caught. Okay? These people are not okay. They need help. And they, they need help with security and with proper supervision, and they're not getting it here in our neighborhood. The morning after it happened, I was talking to one of my neighbors, and I told him what happened, and I told him, I said, you know, "This guy picked the wrong house because I happened to be ready for him." And my neighbor looked at me for a minute, and he said, "I don't think he picked the wrong house. I think he picked the right house because I wasn't ready." Someone will not be ready next time, and it will happen again if we don't take care of this problem now. We need to fight this problem now, or we're going to be telling a very different story when one of these violent felon lunatics gets loose. Simone wrote, in my opinion, a very good letter. Please follow up on that. As my wife said, please, each one of you, can you please take five minutes and just make a phone call? They don't care so much about us. I think they'll care more about your phone call. Give them a call. Ask for their help. Tell them this is a real problem. They need to pay attention. Take that time. That's what we're asking. Follow up on Simone's letter, please.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Russell Norowski. I also live in West San Ana Heights. So I'm well aware of city zoning. I've been a part of the San Ana Heights community for over 25 years, was part of a group that got us annexed into Newport Beach. So knowing how you all know zoning, when a residential track is zoned, residential single-family, that's exactly what it means. And yet, for countless years, many cities, not just Newport Beach, has been fighting the state of California, federal regulations on trying to stop recovery facilities from entering a RSF zone. And so the issue is business versus residential. We are clearly zoned residential, but yet we have, on your website, it shows four recovery facilities, but there's actually one that's not even on your list, and it's a licensed facility called Yosemite East Recovery. It's a men's facility. And so, like most people in a RSF zone, they want to see families, kids, playing, safety, you know, they don't want to see businesses taking over their community. So why is it happening? You know, is it the state? Is it the city? I mean, I personally witnessed Huntington Beach City fighting Gavin Newsom and the state on, on, on the state saying, "You must put high-density residential in your city." And they say, "No, we will not." So you have the opportunity to stand for us, the constituents of your city, and uphold the residential single-family zoning. There's plenty of places to put recovery facilities, and I support those facilities, but they belong in a business zone because they are a business. They make a lot of money. And we have one recovery center, the Yosemite East. They refuse to put one penny in maintaining their property. There's dry rot visible, termite damage, dire need of paint, but they don't care. So I called them this morning and said, "Why is it you can't maintain your house when you're making all this money from subsidies, state insurance, who knows where the money comes from?" But the fact that this is being allowed is very disturbing, you know? And according to your website, it's supposed to be 700 feet apart.
Thank you.
We're, these are like 110 feet apart.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Steve Pappas, 20122 Riverside Drive. These are all my friends and neighbors. I see every one of them nearly every day. And I want to go back to the incident with Jennifer and Travis, just to remind everybody, when Travis shot and defended his house, they left that body there for 16 hours.
16 hours.
At the foot of their stairs. 16 hours rotting away. 16 hours. That is insane by itself. Closed off the neighborhood, scared the crap out of everybody. Kids just don't come out like they used to, period. My wife has lived in the same house that we're in for 60 years since they were built. And the changes that she could lecture you about and how bad it's gone would just turn your heads. We're thinking about moving our entire life because it is screwed up there. I walk my dogs every morning, everybody sees me, and I deal with guys waiting for the probation officer, parole officer, police, sitting on the corner. This is not a normal neighborhood. It's kind of, it doesn't scare me, but it should. But you go back to the crime, mailboxes left open, yeah, the smell of cigarettes, you know, 4:00 in the morning, it's crazy. And when these people come and go to these houses, they just, they're all, they all have the same scenario. They're wearing white tennis shoes, blue jeans, and they run into the house and close the door. And a few of the neighbors have seen me having words with the one from...
What's the house across the street from us?
Yeah, from the Gratitude house. Holler and back and forth. You know, some good vulgarity, which I won't use. And it's crazy. We should not have to live like this. And you want to put another one in, they have beautiful children right next door, two beautiful children who want to play out front. I wouldn't advise it. We just saw it today. We were out there. And they want to put a bunch of psychos in there? That is crazy. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers right now? Okay, this, this item's on the agenda, so we...
I'm Bill Finster, and I live at 1591 Indus. I'm right across the street from Jen and Travis. I was there that morning when this whole thing went down, and I remember my wife waking me up, and she says, "Bill, get out here, something's happening." And then I've been involved pretty much ever since trying to, to get the city council. I think we've got three of you up there right now that are on our side. We've got Diane Dixon that's on our side. And to see this house next to Jessica Arnold, to a guy, a flipper came in, and he redid it, it used to be a drug rehab place before, come in and do what he did, did a fantastic job fixing it. He paid 1.2 for the house. He turned around, and it sold within 12 days for $2,495. And there, it's the price range that these people want to be into, and we just have to control it. They consider these people handicapped, but they're handicapping the people like myself and all our other neighbors that live in the neighborhood that have to put up with this stuff on a regular basis. But we need this city, whether it's the city or the state, somebody's got to do something in regards to it. We've got to put some type of control to keep this neighborhood a neighborhood because our cul-de-sac is so incredible when everything is going on with all the kids out there. My grand, or my grandchildren, they used to live with me for three years with their parents because they were having some financial problems, and that, that cul-de-sac came alive with the kids out there. But right now, especially with another one coming in, I mean, we've got, we've got five drug rehab places, we've got a senior living place, it's almost like, we might as well be a commercial zone because it's, it's just not right to have this commercial activity going on in our neighborhood, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers on this item, you want to take a stab at this one real quick, or?
Yeah, so just briefly, I mean, I definitely agree with the residents. There is an over-concentration of state-licensed facilities in this neighborhood regarding 1621 Indus. They applied for a new mental health license from the state of California, and it's unf... And it's unfortunate, but they've taken away local control from cities. And they have state laws that say that, that cities are prohibited from regulating them. We can't zone them. We have to treat them just like they're single-family residents. We can't have any distancing requirements. So everything as far as their ability to operate is all with the state. In the last week, we've sent two letters to the state regarding these facilities. Both, both of those were in opposition to the facility based on the over-concentration of the neighborhood. You know, the city continues to work with our state legislators to try to return local control to cities so that we have the ability to regulate them either through, through zoning or other means. And, you know, it's, it's just been a long process. City's been working on this, you know, since 2006. We've had, you know, various litigation on this matter. And I don't think there's a council member up here that isn't aligned with not having the facilities over-concentrated in your neighborhoods. So that, that's kind of where things stand. We're still, you know, still going to be opposing this with the state. No final decisions have been made to put a facility there, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you. Okay. Before we do a closed session announcement here, we have any conflicts moving into closed
I'm going to be recusing myself from item 3B due to a personal conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Do you have a closed session announcement?
And I have to recuse myself as well on 3B due to receiving campaign contribution exceeding $250.
Excellent. Ms. Rapp.
City Council adjourned to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding the litigation titled State Farm Insurance Company versus the City of Newport Beach. And to meet with the city's real property negotiators regarding negotiations with David Banson of Pacifica Christian High School regarding the property at 883 West 15th Street in Newport Beach. And that's all set forth on the agenda under item 3A.
Excellent. Call the meeting to order for the October 10th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill has an excused absence.
Ms. Rapp, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no closed session report this evening.
Wonderful. Now it's time for the invocation by Dr. Ahmed Sobe, Religious Director at the Islamic Sierra Council of Southern California.
Good afternoon. Respected council members, city leaders and employees, citizens of this beautiful city. On this beautiful sunny day, we acknowledge that we are blessed and we express our gratitude to the giver who gave us such a beautiful life. And we raise our hands and bow our heads to the Almighty, the Sustainer, the Giver. And we ask Him with humility and gratitude. Oh God, we ask you to guide us among those whom you've guided. We ask you to protect us among those whom you've protected. We ask you to bless us among those whom you've blessed. We ask you to pardon us among those whom you've pardoned. We ask you to heal us among those whom you've healed. Give our leaders and the leaders of this beautiful city the wisdom, the courage, and the clear vision to make the right decisions for everyone in this city. We ask you to keep us safe and united as a city and as a nation. And I'd like to conclude and finish this invocation. As a citizen of this city and as a native of the historical holy city of Bethlehem, that I ask you to give peace, prosperity, and security to the inhabitants of that part of the world, the Holy Land, at these difficult times, regardless of their backgrounds, faith, ethnicity, or nationality. Amen.
Thank you. If you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our amazing country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, the notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now it's the time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities and the time for council members to request an A1 item. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you. Let's see. I attended my monthly OCAG and SCAG board meetings as well as the SPONS annual meeting. We kicked off our fall class at the Newport Beach Foundation's Distinguished Citizen Program last week. I also attended the 10th Annual Marian Bergerson Women of Character Awards Luncheon. And I want to acknowledge and congratulate our very own Robin Grant for her graduation from the Excellence in Public Service Series. Lastly, I want to remind everyone of our upcoming aviation committee meeting this Monday at 5:00 PM in the community room here at City Hall. Thank you.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, we had, the Newport Beach Foundation had its summer, the end of summer soiree. We partnered with a literacy project here at Newport Beach. And we had over 30 people sign up to be part of the Booster Club, which is a great opportunity to go and help with literacy for second graders around Orange County when it comes to graduation. Councilwoman Grant and I were at the Library Foundation event. I'm assuming you'll talk about that, so let you talk about that the other night. That was a terrific event and well-attended. The Newport Beach Film Festival, opening night this Thursday, so hope to see many of you out there. That's going to be a lot of fun. Opening night party at Fashion Island on Thursday night and the film earlier in the day that evening as well. Newport Christian Elementary hosted me today. I spoke to a bunch of second graders about local government. So they're more interested in my age and my singing ability, but we had a great time talking about ordinances and resolutions. And I want to thank Lindsay Lynch and her son Carson Lynch, who was running for City Council of the school. So that was a fun experience. And then I had the pleasure of going to the state of the schools this morning with Newport Mesa Unified School District and was just really impressed with the students there and all that they've accomplished. And so that's my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
General comment, I think it's just amazing to understand how many wonderful operators we have in our city and how many opportunities we have as council members to participate in the works that are going on with the nonprofits, the businesses and everything as here every two weeks from us. I will point out a few same events and different events. The Newport Beach Chamber always is working on something. This last week, they had the 61st Annual Newport Beach Sand Castle Contest. I mean, that's longer than most, many of us have been alive. And we appreciate their longstanding event, providing free, family-friendly programs for our city. Another great organization, the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club had their opening ceremonies. And they were recognizing club member Ann Nunez for her win at the recent World Champion of Lawn Bowling in Australia. She competed against 26 national world champions. She's a local lawn bowler in our local club and returned to Newport Beach as the victor and won the women's world title. So that's a big accomplishment for the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club. Yes, I did attend with Councilmember Stapleton, the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation summer, or close of summer event. An incredible group raising money and providing, again, family-friendly opportunities for our children, our adults, our seniors in our community. Also yesterday, I attended the Newport Beach, or on Sunday, or October 8th, whenever that was, not that long ago, the fire department had their annual fire service day at the Acacia Station, Fire Station 7. Lots of tours, fire and safety demonstrations. It's a wonderful opportunity to meet the local firefighters and understand exactly what they're doing here to keep us safe in Newport Beach. Last thing I want to talk about is something really important in our community that we don't think about a lot, which is the Second Harvest Food Bank and their work to, in support of 40 years of partnering with local food pantries, 300 pantries and distribution centers throughout the county. They benefit 350,000 food insecure people in our community alone. And I, I don't think we all really understand that there is that kind of food insecurity here in Orange County. And the Second Harvest Food Bank has been working for over 40 years on that. And they work with philanthropic groups like The Harvesters. That was started by one of our local residents, Jill Johnson Tucker. She's done a lot for our city. Most importantly, she was the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. She started Harvesters and to date, they've raised $16 million to benefit these families, food insecure families in our city. So I just want to give them a shout out and say, bravo. Thank you.
Councilmember Wagon.
Yes, I was, is that loud enough? I guess it seems low, but I guess it's working. I was able to attend the rededication of the Christ Church by the Seas Sanctuary. Their windows were destroyed by a vandal in, right after Easter last year and, or beginning of this year. And so they just had a rededication of the stained glass. I'd like to thank PD because they responded when they had heard what was happening and this vandal was headed to the church across the street to do more damage over there. And they were able to stop them in time. And then they came over and boarded up the, the openings of the doors and the windows to help the church. Residents came down later that day to help clean it up. A former member, a council member, Don Webb, was one of those who did. And I ran into him at the rededication of the sanctuaries, sanctuaries windows. So I wanted to just take a moment to congratulate the church on doing a fundraising drive that was able to get the stained glass repaired. And it looks beautiful down there. So that was a good, a good day to see. Congratulations to my colleague on graduating from the Women of Character at the Marian Bergerson, who is a former longtime resident of Newport Beach. Marian was a, was a great champion in public service. So I'm glad that they named that in her honor. And I'm glad that our council member took the time to go through that class to graduate. So congratulations there. And then, as said by Councilmember Grant, I also attended the fire service day. I must have been over by the hot dog truck munching down and missed you the whole time. But I was actually probably petting Tora, the, the, the dog that the fire department has. She's the cutest thing and I can't get my kids away from her. So, but it was a great day to be out there. The public really does appreciate that the fire department opens their doors. They had some cool demonstrations. I could feel the heat off one of the buildings they set on fire and then put it out within a few moments. So it's great to see our guys in action. It's especially thankful to the community as well because they come out on a Sunday and they don't, they don't have to do this. They don't have to be out there. But our, our fire department does work hard for the public and it's good to have that out there. So thanks to them for being out there.
Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, just I attended the OCCN District Operations Committee. And then at the end of the meeting, they booted me over to the Administration Committee. So I'll be out of the nuts and bolts part of the operation and onto somehow trying to manage it all with some help from staff, you know, minor. It's a, there's a lot going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any items to pull from consent or conflicts to announce?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I have none.
Councilmember Grant.
No.
Councilmember Wagon.
I do not.
Councilmember Avery.
On number 12, please.
Number 12. And I have none. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have a motion?
I will go ahead and move the consent calendar except for item 12, which was pulled by Councilmember Avery and noting the amendments to item 1, the minutes.
I'll second.
And was second by Councilmember Stapleton. Wonderful. Let's go into public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 11 and 13. Now would be the time for 1 through 11 and 13. Seeing no public comments on that, seeing nothing up here, let's take a vote on consent.
The motion carries 6-0.
We have item 12 pulled by Councilmember Avery. Would you like a staff report on that? Couple of questions.
We have a PowerPoint. Hi, Mayor Blom, members of city council. Well, we're going to go ahead and talk about the, the lease agreement with Newport Aquatic Center. Do you want to kick off on the basics and I can go through some of the, some of the other items?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Lauren Whitting Whitlinger with the Community Development Department. We have in front of you this evening a joint powers agreement with the County of Orange and an amended and restated lease agreement with Newport Aquatic Center. This is in regards to a property in the Back Bay. North Star Beach is how it's locally known. The city and the county jointly own the property. The, the two larger parcels, not outlined in red, but that are contained, that contain that part, that area. Those two parcels are owned by the city and the county jointly. The city and county have a joint powers agreement that was executed back in 1978 that directed the city to lease the property on behalf of the county and the city. And the city went out to bid and entered into a lease agreement with Newport Aquatic Center for a human-powered water-based activities program. NAC, as it's, as it's known by staff, built the facility and has been operating the facility ever since. It's a world-renowned facility for all kinds of water sports, rowing and stand-up paddleboard, et cetera, kayaking. The lease is expiring in October of 2023, later this month. And we have negotiated a new JPA with the county and a new lease agreement with Newport Aquatic Center.
So these are some of the terms of the new lease. So it's a 30-year term with two 10-year extensions. It's a no-fee lease in exchange for continued operations of a human-powered watercraft facility at no cost to the city of Newport Beach. It's subject to all the entitlements and the permits issued by this county, the state, and the city, which also, also include a coastal development permit and a CUP. It also has a waiver of council policy F7. And they would continue to operate with the city-approved facilities management plan and continue to provide, to provide and satisfy city's city insurance requirements. These are some of the improvements from the old lease that are changes for the current lease that were negotiated. One is for the NAC to invest at least 3% of their annual revenues into repair and maintenance of the facility. Another would be to require inspections with the city and the NAC to provide annual programming and reporting forecasts, annual maintenance planning and completion report on what they've completed in the last year, and annual report of their board members and who are, who they are sitting on their board. Added internal control language. This is, this is for accounting procedures. So it'd be to maintain internal accounting procedures and control inconsistent with GAAP. Report out to the city about their internal control audit and complete an annual independent audit. We felt it was important to have an independent audit each year to help with the management of the facility. And it also, we retain the option to do our own audit on the city end as well. Also, we put in some specifics to define defaults and timelines. The old lease was sort of vague when it came to cure periods. So we added in some actual hard deadlines, so 10 calendar days to address issues such as accumulation or refuse should that happen. The facilities management plan, that is a separate document that we have with, with NAC. And, and that basically has a lot of the same provisions that are in the lease. And it just goes through them here, but it really gives us an operating guide on how to work with the NAC on an ongoing basis. So at this time, we take any questions that you have in particular?
Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. Sean, could you explain policy F7?
Yeah, that's actually Lauren's.
Okay, Lauren.
Realm. I'll let her explain that one.
So city council policy F7 guides staff in how to manage the city's real estate portfolio. It requires that we bid out any, any solicitation for, for new leases, new tenants. tenants. Also that we get an appraisal and charge fair market value in exchange for lease of the city properties. So in, in this instance, the applicant is asking for a waiver of F7. We did not go out to bid. We worried that, you know, going out to bid would delay the continuation of the, and the operation of the facility. They're also asking for a waiver of the fair market rent provision of F7 in exchange for providing all of the public amenities and recreation services. They're asking for that waiver of rent. And then they're also asking for a waiver of provision F7 of policy F7, which requires that their board be elected by their members at large. They're asking for that waiver because that is not how their board is, is made up and they have a board selection process that they detailed in a letter that's attached to the staff report.
So it's essentially a self-perpetuating board. Is that correct? Right. Thank you. Well, the NAC is known to just about everybody in town and it's a fantastic facility and it's given adults, youth, kids, just incredible experience on the water, rowing, paddling, water safety, the lot. It's, it's just exceptional. It's a huge resource in our city. And I pulled it because I felt that we should discuss the way forward for NAC, which I think everyone's done a really good job, NAC and the city coming together on this new agreement, which is far more robust than the city's previous agreements. And that's, you know, that's excellent. And I, I'm satisfied that with the new agreement, we can forego F7, which looks like staff report is saying yes. So what, the people that follow it a little bit know, we, over a period of four years from 2020 to 2024, there were multiple lawsuits that they were involved in with either people who attended NAC or were members there. And I have no idea what has transpired in those. But it just to me, when that, when you see that, it makes you sort of wonder what was going on there. And I am, I'd rather focus on the positive aspects of going forward for NAC and for the community. And I think that the new, this new document, there's several things in it on numbers 19 for reporting. And these are things that are new, that weren't there before. So that's an annual report, annual program report, annual forecast of operations, annual report of board members. And it also includes a sidewalk with prior notice. And I would hope that we could get to where there would be a sidewalk at any time by our, by the city, just to review the property. And I bring this up because I ran a similar facility in, in Newport Harbor, Orange Coast College, and it was managed by the county. And they just showed up and did sidewalks and never knew they were coming and it would just be random. And it worked out fine. We just, we never had a problem. They would write us up if there were a couple of things they saw that needed fixing attention. And that helped keep me kind of on my game. And I just think with a self-perpetuating board, you know, and under the spirit of F7, you would have, to a certain degree, you would have members voting on the board. But here, we don't have that. So what, what do we have? And to sort of guarantee everybody that it's going to run properly. And so that's my concern. But I, at the same time, I'm very satisfied with the effort of staff and AC coming together, coming up with this agreement. And so, but I would like to see the, the inspections of the facility be random and not announced in advance.
We, we can certainly make that change. I believe you're talking about 19.1, the sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, we can make that, because right now it reads with prior notice. We could do without prior notice. And it's annually and we could, we can increase that as well.
Yep. I just want to see it succeed and I, and I.
I think that's a good operational change from our side, too, to keep us more connected.
Right.
That's reasonable.
Yep. It's, I think it's appropriate and I really appreciate the effort on the language, the default language in particular, but also 19 and 20, those are things that really make this agreement a strong agreement between both parties. So thank you for that. I know you put, both put in a lot of time on this. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. First, I want to mention that I do agree with Councilmember Avery that the amount of time and effort that's been put in by the staff, both on the city side and on the NAC side, has been very commendable. And we've come really far along in providing an agreement that works probably really well for everybody involved. And that meaning the city, NAC, and most importantly, the residents of whose property we are the stewards of. And we want to make sure that that is the focus, is that the residents and the members and the community benefit from what we're putting together here. NAC leadership has demonstrated a commitment to the city's mission to providing affordable access and quality youth and adult programming, and that's very commendable. To its great credit, they've created over the years an internationally recognized program. I've been over there several times and it's extremely impressive in watching, especially watching our youth there, which is very important, I think, to a lot of our communities, to make sure that we have safe operations in our city that provide a lot of benefit. All of that has to be viewed in a lens, again, that this is a use of public lands and we want to make sure that the proper protocols are met and that the property is used in a way that services the public lands and, and our obligation to those lands. I also agree with, after reviewing everything and extensive conversations with staff and others involved with this, I do agree that it's potentially okay to waive policy F7 in that it may not work for the particular corporate structure that is utilized by the NAC. But again, viewing that in the lens that we aren't waiving the proper protocols and the necessary audits, reporting, that kind of thing, that make this operation safe and successful for all of the participants and the city. So as Councilmember Avery said, you know, we've got quite a bit of added benefit as far as additional reporting and accounting and auditing. I'm pleased to hear that we're going to have spontaneous oversight as opposed to noticed oversight. And just, that just makes more sense. And more of it, I think, Sean, you had mentioned maybe doing that four times a year, or maybe even just, it can just be oversight. It doesn't have to be listed as however many times. It's whatever you would think as the director, you know, would be required or necessary. I do think that we could potentially look at something else, which I think is important, you know, in looking at the board and not having a member-voted board, but having a self-perpetuating board. There's a couple things in the formation documents of the NAC that maybe could be visited, which would be, number one, I believe that they have no term limits for their board. And I think it would have been interesting to know how long the particular board members are sitting. I know it's a three-year term for a board member, but how many terms they've been, are sitting. I think term limits in general are a good thing. So that's potentially something that I would be interested in pursuing, but that's not really something that's in this contract. And another thing that might benefit the city and the residents and the members is if we leave it as a self-appointed board, adding a board member that would be appointed by the city and not necessarily, not a council member, not a staff member, but maybe an independent person. We've done that in other instances with other contractors and that kind of thing, where there's a particular benefit to having some kind of oversight on a regular basis on the board. So I'd be interested to hear from my other council members if they'd be amenable to that kind of a change to the, to the agreement. Otherwise, I just do actually, actually want to commend the NAC for the wonderful operations. And we're looking forward to working with you for 30 years plus in providing safe operations for human-powered water sports. Thank you.
Councilmember Kleiman.
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiment up here, gratitude to both sides. I know it's been a long journey in getting this to where it is today. So thank you for that. I also want to acknowledge that I agree, this is a wonderful facility and really an asset to the community. My son has participated in summer camps there, particularly during COVID, which was, was a nice way to, you know, be outside and be active. So I think for me, the only things that I would like to see added, I know, or I believe that they're already doing this, both locking the restrooms overnight and, and the parking lot and not allowing overnight parking of vehicles, particularly those that don't belong to NAC. So I would just like to see that reflected in the agreement. And really, those are my only comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking staff. I know this has been a long journey. I see NAC Board President Chris Blank. Thank you for your leadership during this process with you and your team. I've had the pleasure of being over there a few times and it is a world-class facility. And I'm just so proud to have that in our backyard and what you guys are able to do to support the junior program. It's one of those facilities where I couldn't think of a better use for that location. And when I go there, it is full all the time and being used. So just kudos to you guys. Chao, well done.
Thank you. And I won't reserve my comments until we're done with public. So if we want to go to public comment at this time, I think that'd be a great point. Anyone needing to talk? If we don't need to, oh, Jim, that's my bad.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In my written comment, I said I hadn't had time to review this in detail. I still have not reviewed it in detail, but I have looked at it a little bit. First concern I have here that has not been mentioned is you're approving not only the ground lease with the NAC, but you're being asked to approve a new joint power agreement with the county. I have a concern about that similar to my concern about your action at your last meeting, where you made an agreement that, at least in my view, you are co-equal participants with the Library Board of Trustees and you approved something that they had not reviewed. In this case, the joint power agreement that you'll be approving tonight is actually not in the agenda packet. When you go to page 12 dash 6, it just says file link. And surprisingly, it says it's not here because it's too big. First of all, it doesn't actually tell you where the file is. It just says file link. So in this archive, nobody will know what that was. Number two, if you do do this electronically and look at it, you'll find it's a 531-page document, but actually only 12 pages of that are the joint power agreement that you're being asked to approve. And part of that is that the county has reviewed and agrees to the ground lease that you are doing, the county being an equal owner of this property and actually the steward as the trust land. And when you look at the agenda packet, you will see that the county actually reviewed the ground lease in 2018 and the Board of Supervisors, based on their staff recommendation, said, we like this ground lease. They have not looked at this current ground lease. In that file link, somebody has slipped in the one currently in this agenda packet. I don't know what they reviewed back in 2018. They certainly haven't looked at this. And it seems both parties to the joint power agreement have to be agreeing on the same document. And it doesn't seem to me that that's possible. Also, I don't find anywhere here the facility management plan. I don't know if that currently exists, if there's a new one, exactly where that's going to come from. Sean, who is going to approve that or have oversight of it? And while it's good to see all of this audit stuff, I have not looked at it in detail enough to know if there's concern, again, as during that time of the lawsuits, that there might be some mismanagement going on. Whether this has an easy way for the, for the city to correct that mismanagement, the audits will tell you whether that's a problem, whether it authorizes you to do something to correct that is less clear to me because I haven't looked at in detail. And then finally, as I pointed out to Lauren, there, the, the exact property that you're being leasing is supposedly described here in an exhibit. And the legal description is not the legal description of the four acres that you would be leasing to the NAC. It is the description of the entire joint thing owned by the county and the city. And that was inadvertently copied into the ground lease. And the actual description of the property, you'll find on page 92, which was Exhibit A to the old lease, which is just a diagram. Nobody seems to have ever read it carefully enough to wonder where the legal description was. So there is no legal description. There is a diagram of it here with directions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? All right. Seeing that, I'm going to bring it back up here. Just a couple of quick things to say. And I will echo all of my companions up here that NAC has done an amazing job. And I, I do have firsthand knowledge of that. My son was there for five years, was heavily involved in the rowing program. I thought it was one of the best in the world. When he was on it, I will use this one moment, say they came in second in the country, which I think is no small achievement, especially when you look at some of the other clubs that are out there. And they, they lost to Greenwich, Connecticut, that I think's been there for about 100 years. And so I look at it as something that really gives back to not just the families in Newport, but all over Orange County. And I think to talk to Mr. Mosher's point briefly, we are looking at the county as a whole. We are partners in that land. And I think that's why facilities like this are so important, because they're not just for Newport, they're for anybody. They've also done an amazing job there of getting underprivileged children into these programs as well, which is, I think, really part of our mission at all points, to make sure that there is equity across the board for people that are able to do these programs. Because it's, it's not often you have a space, a facility and the resources to do something like this. It's a very expensive sport. And we have a very large harbor that makes it possible. And so I know a lot of places throughout the world just don't even have this ability. I have been working with staff closely on this agreement. And I understand some of the concerns of my other colleagues up here. I do appreciate Councilmember Avery's comments about inspections, you know, and we had worked up some language that we can put in there that basically, without notice and just get rid of the next little bit and we can get there and they're just available. And I think the, the board would be amenable to that, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that's a great point. Same way the health department works for all restaurants out there. They certainly don't call us before they show up. And they can come whenever they want. So I think that's a very fair piece. And I think staff might actually enjoy that because there's a lot of cool programs going on down there that you get to see. As far as board structure and policy F7, I, I think it's interesting because how, how often do we waive F7? Or how, Lauren, how, do we recently just waive F7 for anything else?
We did recently waive F7, basically all of the same terms for a lease with Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, so their corporate governance and structure is similar to this. I think that's important to note. We're, we're not in the business of running aquatic centers or running boys and girls clubs or running other community associations or the Boy Scouts. And a lot of these have similar governance structures. And that, that kind of comes back to why we're doing this and why I think it is an excellent choice for us to waive it. And I'm happy to put that other language in. Maybe any other comments up here? If not, I'm happy to make the motion on this with the proposed changes that we had just made. Are we good with it? You want to read those out for me?
Yeah, just to confirm. So we're going to change 19.1 to allow for inspections without prior notice. And then we'll add a provision that says the restaurants must be closed outside of the facility operating hours and no parking overnight of non-NAC-associated vehicles in the parking lot overnight, outside of the facility hours.
I'd be amenable with those changes. So I'd like to make that motion. I have a second.
I have a second.
And a second from Councilmember Stapleton. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries six zero.
Excellent. We're now moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. I don't like clapping. Okay, Jim.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name, as you know, is Jim Mosher. I don't usually have non-attended comments, but I have two tonight. The first The first one is actually on an agenda item, which is Roman numeral 17, which is your opportunity to reconsider votes that you took at your last meeting, and I would like you to consider reconsidering the vote you took on the Mariners' Joint Use Agreement, which I think needed the concurrence of our Labor Board Library Board of Trustees. Second comment, which is a non-agenda item, although ironically, it relates to the last item that you just heard, and it relates to that last meeting, at which, as you recall, there was a long discussion about public restrooms and whether they should be closed at night and whether anybody had any business being out in the wee hours of the night needing to use a restroom. Some people thought it was a good thing that we close our beaches at 10 o'clock, and it was kind of implied nobody but a resident should have any business being out after that hour on a beach. I tried to point out, I think the people of California do have a constitutional right to visit the water. I still think that's true, and I wanted to point out to our council that we actually have in our Newport Beach Municipal Code a requirement that was put there when we asked for permission to grant coastal development permits. So we have a section called Title 21 of our Newport Beach Municipal Code, which is the Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan. Section 2148.055E2 of that reminds us, the City of Newport Beach, that the public has access 24 hours a day to the mean high tide line for purposes of fishing or whatever recreation they would want, including, I assume, at the North Star Beach. And it further prohibits in Newport Beach any sign at a beach that would imply that the public does not have access to the water at any time during the day, and further promises that the City of Newport Beach, when it replaces new signs or replaces old signs, will actually explain to the public that they do have the right to cross the beach, to use the water, and to use the 20 feet of dry sand between the water and the sign. So people do have a right to be there, and they may need to use restrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. We're going to move on to the public hearing item. Item 14 is ordinance number 202315, amendment to the Newport Village Planned Community Development Plan to update definitions and allowed uses within Area 5. First.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and City Councilmember Simone Georgis, Assistant City Manager, and with me is Jocelyn Perez, Associate Planner. So this evening, we have a very brief presentation for you about an amendment to some zoning language for the Corona Del Mar Plaza Shopping Center. I'm going to allow, go ahead and have Jocelyn make the presentation, and then at the end, the applicant's representative is here to address the council also.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Mayor Blom, my name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning Division, and this item, for your consideration, is an update to the Newport Village Plan Community Development Plan to update the allowed uses and definitions within Area 5. The Newport Village Plan Community encompasses the six properties between San Joaquin Hills Road and East Coast Highway. However, this amendment is specific to one property, that's Area 5, which is known as the Corona Del Mar Plaza. The property owner, Irvine Company, has requested this amendment with the ultimate goal of modernizing and bringing consistency between the PC text and the current Newport Beach zoning code. The amendment has four changes. First, an update to the definition of gross floor area, so outdoor patios are no longer counted toward gross floor area. Second, an update to the definition of restaurant, to refer to the definition of restaurant provided in the Newport Beach zoning code. Third, to strike the requirement for a site plan review. And fourth, to update the permitted uses in the PC text to also allow the uses of the general commercial zoning district in the Newport Beach, of the Newport Beach zoning code. With the update to the definition of gross floor area, approximately 4,000 square feet of area will become available for future development. However, only 600 square feet of that 4,000 could be used toward future restaurants due to an existing 15% cap on restaurants within the shopping center. The remaining 3,400 square feet would need to be used toward either retail or personal services. That concludes my overview of the amendment. I'm available for any questions, and representatives from Irvine Company are also available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the dais right now? No, I think, please, Councilmember Grant.
This is just a general question, not relating specifically to this project, but what is the theory of not counting outdoor dining area towards the square footage with, does that, as it relates to parking? I mean...
That update is in line with how the Newport Beach zoning code has blended parking rates for shopping centers, with outdoor dining not specifically addressed within that blended parking rate.
Okay, so I understand that now it's going to be consistent. What's applied to Corona Del Mar Plaza would be consistent with, I think, the changes that we made a number of months ago, actually, at council. Is that correct?
The update will make the PC text consistent with the zoning code, yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was just asking generally from the zoning code. I couldn't remember your presentation from at that time, like, because presumably, if you have outdoor dining, you have more cars coming, right? If you have a certain amount of square footage for outdoor dining, you'd have more cars. But this is just, I mean, obviously, we've approved it before. I just wondered if you could just explain it once again.
So let me try to tackle it. So we've changed our code to look at just gross floor area, and we don't necessarily look at that outdoor dining, but there's a limit of how much outdoor dining restaurants want to achieve anyway. So that's how we generally look at it. Every city is a little bit different. We surveyed all the cities and changed our code to be much more consistent. I agree with you, you have outdoor dining. Does that penalize you on the parking? And it should, but we have a rate that is very specific for the gross floor area. Not a perfect method, but we think it does work.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I think overall, this has got to be encouraging for businesses, you know, just trying to, you know, hang on, do their thing, and little hands-off in terms of some things, some of the permitting's easier.
Right.
Quicker, is that right?
Right.
Yeah, all good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments up here? Let's go for public comments.
Good evening, Mayor Blom, members of the City Council. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing Irvine Company in this application tonight. I'd like to thank city staff for their hard work in getting us here tonight. We really appreciate their very professional and diligent efforts. I did have a PowerPoint presentation for you, but I don't think you're going to need it tonight, because I'd be very repetitive with staff. The goal of our Plan Community Text Amendment is to be in conformance with the city's zoning code standards. There is no proposed development, no projects are being advanced. So we are trying to conform the old PC to the updated city zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I think we're great. Any other speakers?
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have the same comment on this that I had when it was presented to the Planning Commission, and I think one of the planning commissioners, if you read the minutes, if they're not totally clear, had the same question. We have been told, or I think we understand, that the Corona Del Mar Plaza, right down the street here, is currently built out to its building limit, counting the outdoor areas, which were originally to be counted in that building limit. They assure us that they have no plan to build anything more than is already there. But by now, not counting the outdoor areas, as one of the slideshows, they have extra buildable area. Why is anyone wanting to change that definition if there is no intention to use it? It does not make a whole lot of sense to me. Did not make a whole lot of sense to one of the planning commissioners. It's great to have it consistent with the code, but the original plan was of a certain size shopping center, including those outdoor areas, and now you are allowing outdoor areas plus a bigger built area. So if there is no plan to use it, why are they asking for it? And then the other comment I had, which is not something that the Irvine Company would be asking for, and unlike the Planning Commission, I don't think you're seeing an entire copy of something called the Newport Village Planned Community Text. But if you did, you would see that it has five planning areas to it. One planning area is Planning Area 3, and we today are sitting in Planning Area 3, and we have a massive city hall here and a big parking structure. Yet if you read the text that goes with Planning Area 3, it will tell you the only thing allowed here is open space. Since we have been here more than a decade now, doesn't somebody think we should change what is allowed on Planning Area 3 to actually allow what is here? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? I'll bring it back up here. I have a motion. Moved by Councilmember Grant and seconded by Councilmember Avery. Thank you. Let's vote.
All right, reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance, Title 4, ordinance 2023-15, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving an amendment to the Newport Village Plan Community PC 27 Development Plan to update the definitions and allowed uses within Area 5 retail. The motion carries 6-0.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Wonderful. Do we have any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.